Oh.
Yeah. Steve.
There you go.
Yeah.
Have it sat in there?
For me, that is.
Thank you.
Actually, the sentiment text, he said Ron, they're interested.
Has his neighbor.
I'm like, I'm like, we got him.
Yeah, yeah.
So. We have a certain fault. With possession, basically, if you hook up with someone.
Yeah, yeah.
Already.
Congratulations.
So.
Thanks.
It was great.
Very cool. I'm happy to have one of the. Here's the card.
Yeah.
Right, good share.
Does that mean we have a go, green lights?
They don't need to just know, they're not goodbye.
Let's call this meeting to order. It's a couple minutes after six o'clock. It is November tenth, twenty twenty five. It looks like all the councilors are present. Uh. I guess that suffices for a roll call. Um. I'd like, any changes or changes to the agenda, councilors? I would like to make a suggestion that. Uh, we move the town attorney up before contract services, if that's a, if there's no objection to that. And I would like to reserve um. Discussion for the solar project. Uh, whenever uh representative is from Solange Energy come on. To dovetail that manager wherever we are in the. In the meeting, so. If there's no objections, um. To the town attorney.
Okay. Well, first one is our uh topic that we've discussed quite a bit. Um. We've got the U M H infrastructure, infrastructure agreement, and I know that our financial advisors put together some financial. Uh, models, maybe one, maybe more than one, that we will. Put into uh the big agreement, let me call it the big agreement, because we've got a, we've got a first and small agreement, if you will, today. Um, but I'm talking about the big agreement, big agreement relates to phase two, phase three. Um, the small agreement that we have in front of you today is a payment agreement, that's. This phase one, that we're just trying to get that knocked out, so that we can keep the ball on. Um, we're looking at the end of this month. Uh, for there to be that work done, and so um. Phase two, uh, phase one, the small agreement, the payment agreement in front of you, I think is ready. For approval. Um, I don't know, David, did you folks get a chance to look at it? It's just a very straight.
We had a chance to briefly.
It's very straightforward.
Everybody has those that came with, yeah.
Yeah, has very few bells and whistles. Um. My suggestion is that if it looks approvable, that you approve it, that you hold off on your signatures. Until we've sent it to them, but uh I think approval tonight would be good, and the only reason for that is. As a public entity, I think it's appropriate for the last entity to sign to be the public body. So you can approve it by motion, second, and a vote if you want to tonight, and then I would suggest that you hold off on those signatures. For all I know, they're going to have some change here. Probably, if anything, it'll be a small change, and if there's a change to it, I don't want your folks to already signed it. Just makes things more com- complicated. So, that's the payment agreement. You want to take that up?
Yes, please. Uh, councilors, do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. To accept the payment agreement uh. For the U M H properties for phase one.
That's right.
Motion by Mary Jo, sent by.
Bad guy.
Okay, fine. By Chad. Uh, any, any further discussion? All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, and David, would your shop be sending that on to them?
If you'd like to say we can't.
Well, I think you're, you've got the more constant communication in my office. I would generally want to send it to their lawyer. As opposed to their corporate people, and I think it's probably better just to get it to the corporate people. Then we want to speed moving equipment back through the lawyers, my guess. Um, so that's, that's the first, the small one, that's the six hundred and forty thousand. So the second, um. The big one, uh, we're just waiting for those financials. Um, possibilities. Have you heard anything from Robert about timing?
Um, we will have things. Distributed prior to the. Meeting on the fourteenth.
Great, okay, so we will then get those numbers, uh, put them together, and um. We'll be in a position to have the. Uh, subcommittee look at them, make a recommendation to the council for approval, to send it forth. With a formal, here's our contract, we sign it, there's a vision to the contract, this is what you pay upfront, this is if there's other. Payment arrangements, whatever those payment arrangements are, and again, those are wait for our finance advisor to complete. So that is status on U M H. Any questions? On that? Uh, let's see here, we've got Jewish Street, um, we've got our lien filed. Or one oh two. Um. Tell me about five oh four. I've forgotten where we were on five oh four, Marshall. What's that?
Five oh four.
Jew, Jewish.
Oh, so five oh four, that's the uh. Uh, I don't believe we're taking action on that, that's uh, gentleman. He's giving you electricity. Uh, but not living there, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that must be the ones disconnected from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's mark for organs, action on that, and you told that, no.
Yeah, what?
Uh, the one we have is the one or two, or it's, um, sorry, Jewish Street, I hear.
Right, the one oh two is the one we.
That's, that's the one, yeah.
Been working on, yeah. Do you want to talk about one or two first?
Uh, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Uh, developments on one oh two is that Habitat for Humanity might be interested in the property. Uh, they said, keep them posted. Um, they, um. It's maybe out of their wheelhouse just slightly, because they normally do single family, uh, they might turn them into duplex, uh. But they're interested in it, and that's about where it stands, so uh, it's back to you.
Yeah.
In terms of how that will work, in terms of.
And, and um, as the president indicated to me, and I, I recalled it once he said it, is that Lafayette is in the business of kind of turning these around, and. And the city of Lafayette gets them by various methods, you know, mainly because they're not being maintained, and then they have turned them over to um. Uh, Habitat. As a municipal entity, you have the right, if you own a piece of property, and that's the big if, because we don't own it, but. If you own a piece of property, you can give it to a five oh one C three charitable organization like Habitat. On any terms that you think are fair.
Uh, he said that. Whoever said, they buy for a dollar.
Yes, yeah, and that's their usual way to do it, and that's, that's totally within your legal authority. You as a public entity can trade property with other public entities at whatever terms you guys both agree to. You give it away, it's fine, if you agree to it and they agree to it. Uh, same thing with five oh one C three. But I think um, in this particular case, the big if is, if you owned it, you could. Now, how do we do that? Well. The owner, as you know, is, is just out of, completely out of pocket, no contact, no. But I'm interested in this property, I, I have no idea what's going on with it. Uh, we have filed a lien for the property, uh. Which is basically against the tax bill, you will. We also have the ability, if we file uh, the lawsuit. Just to go into court and to show the judge how many days this has been out of compliance. With a daily fine, which would amount to a lot of money. How much is that? I don't know. Um. Jim had just indicated the assessed value was a hundred and fifty, something like that.
Uh, tax record is on Beacon.
Yeah, on the tax.
There is about that, a hundred and fifty three thousand.
Which is a pretty big number, I think, for an assessed value, because assessed values are always less than fair market value, but then it's done taken into account, as you said, then take into account condition, nobody's really looked at it. The assessor has not probably looked at it and s- and seen how bad a shape it's in, because that would drop the assessed value. So you have the ability to go into court, get a judgment. And let's say that you get a thirty five thousand dollar judgment. That has the ability to be enforced by a sheriff's sale. So if you had a judgment for thirty five thousand as the town. And it sells at sheriff's sale for thirty four thousand. That means you own it, because you've got thirty five thousand worth of equity in it by, by virtue of your judgment and force, kind of like having a mortgage, once the judge says. Thirty five thousand is the amount, then you essentially have a mortgage. If somebody bids thirty five thousand and one dollars, damn. So the worst scenario is you end up getting thirty five thousand, I'm just making up numbers as you know. So that's the worst scenario. The, the other way it could go is you're going to take that property, because you get it for thirty four thousand, or, you know, it's the highest bid. You, it's, it's not real money to you, because it's. It's money that was generated by the court's order that says that they were uh, being fined on a daily basis, so it didn't. You're not giving up money if you turn it around. Well, you are giving up money. Okay, you are. There's a, there's no way around it. You didn't spend money to give it to, to. Um, the not provided. So, those are the options. Um, I mean, we've kind of been. Fiddling with it, because we wanted to keep out of expenses, which is great, as well you should. Um, we've got the lien, which means we'll eventually, with interest, get paid back for the money we've already laid out, but that's eventually. When's that going to be? I don't know. When they get around to selling it. Or we could decide. Uh, let's go ahead, let's go to court, let's get a judgment that is representative of the amount of. Daily fines for all the days it's been out of compliance, which is a long time.
At your pleasure, councilors.
I think Georgia had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you mentioned it would be sheriff's sale, that's because of fines that we would impose?
It would be our fines, and we would essentially ask for, it's. I use the term sheriff's sale loosely. Sheriff's sale is a type of sale, this is a judgment. Lien sale, but it's essentially the same thing. The sheriff sells it.
Sell it.
Uh, it's not a tax sale as such, it's, we're forcing the sale. Same idea, same process, so it's a, it's a sheriff's sale that results in ours, you know, we get our judgment amount out of it.
Would that work? To our advantage faster than the tax scene?
Well, probably.
Because now that.
It puts it on our schedule, not the, not the, is it the other that sells?
Well, now that there is no mortgage on it, I was wondering if the taxes would be paid.
Hmm, good point.
Wouldn't pay that.
The, the mortgage company was paying them previous. But now there's no mortgage. So someone's going to have to remember to pay the taxes.
Maybe.
If they have the, if they know where to send them, and they have the ability to.
So, yeah, before we do anything, we're going to spend about three hundred bucks of town money on a, a title search, so that we know what we're dealing with. Uh, who, exactly who owns it, exactly who claims. An interest in it, like a mort- mortgage folder, or somebody else who thinks they own money, that sort of thing. And that's usually three hundred or. Three fifty something per mortgage, or, excuse me, during title search.
And after the title search, come back with a favorable report. At that point, the decision is to go ahead and establish how long we've been out of compliance and.
Yep.
A fee schedule for that.
Yep.
And total dollar amount.
Yep.
Uh, up to that date, with it accruing every day after that from then.
That's exactly right. Uh.
What's a reasonable? Number for being out of compliance?
Well, I'd forgotten, I mean, if we started looking at all the various ways it's been out of compliance. Um. I'm going to guess, is it, uh, I'm, I'm going from memory here, George, and maybe you know, or Marshall, it's. The first day that you're out is fifty, then I think it doubles to a hundred, then it goes to two hundred a day, which is probably the max. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think it goes to two hundred and then stays at that.
Stays at that, so that's the max for two hundred times a month, six grand.
What, is it, is it a month or a day?
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, if it was thirty days.
I like it.
They add it up.
It's a quick.
Yeah, 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 that's pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Six grand, seventy two grand in a year. If my lawyer math is good, who's a real mathematician?
What's this?
Yeah. So, real money's pretty fat, is the general.
So, councilors, do you want to uh authorize Eric to go ahead with this scenario?
I, I support that, because I do too.
Good.
Uh, I guess we made a motion, just make official, then.
That'd be helpful. Let's try to make a motion to uh. I guess get a judgment on the house for the number of days it's been in compliance. Okay?
No, you need a title search, you or no?
Uh, I wouldn't necessarily need authority to do that, I've, I've indicated that I'm going to need to, and I'll just pass that through on one of my bills, because it's necessary to do the litigation.
The motion was.
Uh, to pursue.
Litigation?
Litigation against uh. Property owner, enter a house, or. Never basically not clients.
Second.
Mo- motion by Chad, second with Matt, uh, any discussion? On, they would say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, councilors.
We'll get going.
Woo hoo.
Uh, five oh four, I'm not sure.
Five oh four came up because it is never going to be happenable. It does not qualify for energizing with TIPON. And right now, it's sitting, they're not knowing it, there's no sighting. The uh, person that owns it's in the process of trying to find somebody to sell it to.
Hmm.
Because he didn't realize that it was in the town battleground, and would have to be. Subject to the stormwater utility fee, even though.
Oh, that's.
He's not going to use it.
I'm recalling now.
He's not going to use it for a residence, it's still one of our lots, and it's subject to the.
It's not buildable, is it? The flood, no.
Uh, right.
It, uh, it's not buildable, even if it was raised, it's not big enough to build any on.
Well, the, the lot is fairly spacious, but it's just not.
Okay.
The, the energy is the problem, that you gotta leave it.
And he did not intend to tear it down.
He, he, he could elevate it. And meet the requirements, but.
He cannot. It can't get energy.
But if you raise it.
If you raise it.
That would, for flood insurance, you could build there with flood insurance. The ordinance or the code says if it goes for more than a year without being energized, it will not get an occupancy.
No.
Because it's in a, because it's in a flood. And the guy that owned it for five years or six years before could never get past area plan like that.
They did change the rules on flood plan, and I was trying to remember if that's state law.
But outrise rule for flood plan?
I think so. I mean, it's right, fairly recent. Is that state law or county?
That's state.
Okay.
And that goes up to fees.
Sounds like that's his problem, he's got state law, because they're trying to discourage flood plane. Building, even if they raise it.
So my question to the council is, if you're working at getting one or two Jewish clean to. That parcel, if not addressed pretty quickly, is gonna be the same, it's gonna have a tree fall on it down there, it's. It's just gonna be silly, I just felt like it for the address. And what can we do to encourage it to be renewed?
Yeah, I think the only. To me, the, the best way to do it is just give them a notice, say, you're out of compliance, you're going to have to get this thing. Fixed. Well, let's fix it, it sounds like it needs to be torn down, and then you got a flat one, unfortunately. And that would be an expensive proposition, I'm guessing twenty, twenty five, they. Call it off and do all that.
Hmm.
But, you know, that, that's the authority you folks have to be able to, you know, give him sufficient time to do it, because he's in sort of a. Uh, a losing proposition situation.
How's he going to bring it into compliance?
No, no.
We've got.
Well, if he mows it. And takes care of the structure. Even though it doesn't have any. He would still be within town compliance, right, if he fixed the structure.
It's a vacant building, I don't know what you want to do, because it's not. It's not a good situation.
Yeah, it's considered a hazard structurally. Like it could fall on, on the three kids that are climbing around in it.
True.
It, then, then you have to go back to the state law in general, to get a, a demolition. And that's unsafe building. Where you want, which is. Yeah. Bit of a. Bit of a process.
So just play devil's advocate, say he tightens it up, so the roof is good, it, it looks like crap. He takes care of all the exterior holes, but it's, it's still un- unhavocable. Uh, he, he keeps it mowed. There's nothing we can do about it. So, so he's got a junky looking building, I'm just being, is that, is that accurate?
Well. In some ways, unless it's a str- again, if it's a safety hazard. And if you, if, I think almost anything can be buttoned up, so it's not a safety hazard. You know, can kids walk in the back door? Well, that's a problem. But if it's all boarded up.
Have we had um, BJ take or someone, the policeman to look at it and see? I think it would probably do us. Good to go out and take a look and see if this, if we should start writing it up.
I mean, we could document, certainly on camera, what we can see without. Relying upon that, right, so.
Hmm.
Look at it.
The one complaint so far. Has been from the man across the street, he has to look at that lawn. So, he has been a complaint. Listen, he also mowing it?
Yes.
He tried to tell him to stop mowing it.
He was, and I.
Yeah, that makes it hard to.
Yeah, but ladies, it is happening, it's good. So it is taller now.
So I agree, just documenting what it is, and seeing if there's something that can be done short of tearing it all down, that's going to, that's going to. Fulfill what the town wants to get done, make it safe, obviously. And make it less of a nice sort, and that, cutting the grass, and blah, blah, blah.
Uh, with all due respect, to treat him respectfully, we should, I think we should give him a notice, let him know what we're thinking about.
Yeah.
Say, hey, look, this is coming down the pike, uh. Just give you a heads up.
Yeah, he showed up here, you know, he tries to get something done, I think you're right on that. Was that the marshal? Uh, how would you do that?
I'm sorry, that.
Was that something, do we go by and speak to him? I mean, it's.
Yeah, we, we can, certainly.
Uh, gotta work with him, see what's possible.
That's, typically, we, we found success, and if you explain something to someone, and. Uh, you know, try to work with them, see how much time they have, or what kind of a plan, as long as they have a plan, we're actually. Okay with them doing that, but there's significant amount of work that needs done there, he's not going to be having to.
All right, well, I'll wait to hear on that one, and then our executive session. Um, we talked about. Whether we can have one, under what circumstances, or.
There was a House bill that changed some of the rules about executive session, and I was curious. If the council can use its executive session to investigate um. Investment properties. Or not investment properties, but acquiring property.
Yeah, there is something there. I'm going to have to look, and I can do that right now. Um. Let me, let me do that while you folks move on, and I can, I think I can find out what I need right here, because I remember there was a change.
Okay.
So, so what else, sir? Anything else for, I guess the only other comment I'd have is on the public-private agreement, the Gateway Sewer, as well as the G M P, and I've. I reviewed the, the contract, and I had some comments, so I think, you know, you took care of some. I'm good with the document, uh, legal form is fine for. Public-private uh, agreement. And the G M P, uh. Uh, I guess that's an attachment, and then, yeah.
Yeah. Like the appendix F.
What's that?
I think it's appendix F for F one.
And there, yeah.
It's G M P.
G M P. And it's, yeah, so that's really.
They're back.
That, so everything looked good.
Not bad for me.
And I'll look this up here and see if I can get a quickly answer for George.
So, well, Eric is doing his homework, uh, contract services, uh.
When I was booked, created minutes for.
Oh. Twenty, thank you, yes, uh.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the minutes for October thirteenth and October seventeenth, or twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Mary Jo, second base, Matt Kopic, all in favor, say aye. My, my motion passes, thank you, councilors. Now, um.
I'm sorry.
Either London or Witty, or Bowen Construction, or Butler Pyramid, whoever wants it, plus. Take your pick.
I'm Owen.
Bowen.
No.
Okay.
My name's Teal. Um, before you guys, just as Mr. Burns said, is the contractor phase one, the D P A putting bell on our power. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
When are you going to start?
Uh, whenever you guys get equipped.
Equipment is scheduled to arrive on the twenty fourth of this. So we think it's given.
Yeah, we got to pass it, it's.
Ron has a question.
I met with them last week, uh, Houston Electric and Bow. Uh, I think what we've kind of decided to do. Is we're going to go ahead and kill all power to the station. And Bowen will provide a um. Uh, pump. You can pump around, uh. For safety reasons, there would be no electricity going to. Um. And we talked about it, and it's going to be a faster.
Approximately how long? Twenty-four hours?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks is what I heard.
Okay. Yeah, so there's going to be a temporary pump for two weeks?
Yeah.
What happens if that fails? You scramble.
Then another temporary pump comes in.
I got it, okay.
It's likely part of the pump now fails.
Any, any, any questions? It seems pretty straightforward.
I like that.
I like that point of course.
Thanks.
That, that was really tough for you, wasn't it?
Someone would need to make a motion to.
Do we need to go through, we think we go first?
Provide a motion for the public private agreement, and then provide a motion for the phase one unit B.
Ah, okay. Like to make the motion to accept the. Tell me what the first one is, the.
Um, yes, public, private agreement.
Public, private agreement. For phase one?
Yes.
Or for Gateway?
Yeah, Gateway, we jump across, or.
Okay, for Gateway.
B O T. Second.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Steve Han, uh, any discussion, councilors? No discussion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, councilors. Mary Jo, you're up.
And then you need another motion for. The. Appendix, is that what it is, that you've got a lot in there?
Uh, yeah, it's a M P, or E, sorry. Uh, it's F, as in Frank, uh, GM. Approving G M P.
Approving G M P.
Oh, thank you.
For one.
Yeah.
Second.
Hmm, that's a tie between Matt and uh, Steve.
Steve.
Um, Steve, okay.
I'm old.
He's the senior, so we got it, yeah. Just saying.
Age book.
Uh.
Yes.
Mary Jo, did you make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Mary Jo made the motion, uh, Steve second, and thank you, uh, any, any discussion? Any discussion, thank you, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, councilor, motion passes. There you go.
Here's. Thank you very much. I just did a clear point, in case it wasn't clear, as I'm saying. Yeah, they're, they actually brought the one that we signed, so next to Eric.
Right.
Okay, so.
You need this.
I need to sign it.
Is that the next time, um, future agreements is GMP report number two, GMP.
Where the red tags are.
Exactly.
Um.
Unless we were gonna make an amendment, it's not how to ask a motion, you know, that will be your master's calls, whether you have to agree.
So, um, while I'm dealing with this, um, who wants to handle next item? Uh, Butler Fairman?
We can do that.
Yeah, um, on the gateway front, I did want to just give a update on how design is progressing on that one. You've probably seen the crews have been out. Uh, collecting survey, topographic survey of the site. Uh, we've also got utility coordination will be starting up, uh, and getting. Folks out into the field there to start physically locating areas. Uh, then we had a meeting last week. On-site to go over geotechnical investigations for the site, so that'll be something that you're seeing soon as well. Um, and then we've got a meeting set up for Thursday morning with Tipton to block their site with them. And really nail down where that lift station is gonna go on their site and work through that. With them. Uh, with that, BFNS is working on construction drawings. A lot of those items I just discussed are items we need to have completed prior to us having drawings. To bone for them to be able to put together, uh, to guarantee not the price for those. Uh, phases, so that's continuing on and we're making good progress on that. Any questions on gateway and progress there?
Now, what did you say? I wasn't paying attention.
Going great.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the other item we have on here is the Hawks Nest Lift Station, um, spoke with Matt or had some conversation with Matt a little bit earlier. On progress on that one. So when last we spoke, the issue was getting those valves installed, so the water main could be relocated. And that gravity section can be installed. Uh, the valves are installed.
Oh, they have them on Tuesday. I have them on Tuesday. Uh, we had some other appointments after that, so we weren't able to lower the water last week, so, um, we had to actually schedule it to tomorrow. Uh, apparently Dan's not working tomorrow because it's Veterans Day, so we're not doing it until Wednesday, so we're gonna lower the, lower the water Wednesday and then start on the sanitary, do the tie-in between the two, um. Then we can set the valve vault and continue on. We've already cleaned up, ARVs are installed, we cleaned up the prop truck, the first ARV at Muncie. Started from Muncie down to the second ARV, uh, cleanup process. Um, I think we got a little bit yet to do, and then we will finish cleaning up between the last ARV and the valve vault. Um, have that buttoned up, and then we can look at doing the pond, but we're at that point back there.
I did my homework.
Yes, ma'am.
The town is responsible. I will give you guys all the ordinance and I will give you the resolution that shows it. I made copies for you. I did my homework.
Sir, I'm out of here, and the executive session's all good. I gave her the citation, so we're on good shape.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Oh, I just made a voice mine on the bell.
Okay, what is, what is that? Uh, the retention phone. I've, I've got one item while he's here, but I don't.
Okay.
Pardon my procedure.
We're gonna hold this up for a minute. Uh. You got, you got it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we, in our last meeting, we were talking about, uh, discussing the amount of officers and adding more coverage visible time, those kind of things, and there were some concerns about prices in here. Doing some moving around with the officers. We've got a reserve officer, C N Shen, who's been reserved with us for some time now. She's completed a. Uh, I emailed you about this as well, uh, with Jim, I talked to Chad about this. She's completed an eight-month, uh, basic training academy. Uh, in order to be able to get a waiver and not lose that waiver, she has to be moved, moved to aid status. The issue is that we're in a relationship, uh, that's for about ten years, that. However, that affects nepotism, I do not know, uh, or what actions to be taken there. The, uh, alternative. Is to fill that position with an officer who has no equipment, no uniforms, gear, that kind of thing. We'd have to buy all that. With this, we need to reenact. Or we're essentially, other than the labor hours.
Relationship's been on for ten years?
Yes.
Oh, well, and that does change things quite a lot.
I mean, that's why, that's why I specified them.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that changes that.
I mean, to me, the, the really safe way to do it is for you to step out of that, that decision-making and add the council to do it directly. And that you're, that you are not part of that decision.
Yeah, okay.
And just, just that request with the council, make that decision.
But, but I, I was saying that some other forms were needed, or was there a?
Well, you would file a disclosure.
Sure. But I thought there's something else that was needed, no?
Not that I'm aware of. Keep talking, yeah. Okay, that's from the standpoint of. I mean.
I assume it had to be added to ordinance. No.
Not that I'm aware of. Are you talking about nepotism issues?
Yeah.
Well, to me, the nepotism issue is completely avoided because. You're not gonna be doing the hiring, if that's what's gonna happen.
Correct, yeah.
But my question is, would there be a nepotism problem because he was your direct supervisor?
Also, that's, that, that was, uh, already taken care of with the other officers as well, where we have a chief deputy, he's the direct supervisor, and I obviously don't know anything about this.
And that's.
Specifically regarding that.
I mean, it happens, right? And so there, there are workarounds to make sure that it is done lawfully, and that's certainly one of them. You file the disclosure, saying that I have a potential, I have a potential here, it doesn't make it a, a, a conflict. The reason that you file conflict disclosures, so the world knows and go, wait a minute, what's happening here?
Absolutely, yeah.
And so that's all good, and you should do that. Uh, and I think as long as you've got the supervisor and all, who is going to be doing all the, all the issues.
And that's entered on a state form already, so it's recorded by the state.
And, and the council would be asked to approve that, first of all, that the supervisor is going to be and he will not be. And also whatever hiring is going on or buying of equipment or anything, yes, council does that directly.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure that.
That makes sense?
Yeah. Okay, right.
Yeah, let me know if I need to be involved anymore. I'm happy to look into it, but that's the, that's the basic outline of what has to happen.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you betcha. See you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, you got your head back.
Cup of crap.
How many?
Okay, Ju- it's Julie, right?
Yep. So, um, above section three, it states this stormwater and drainage facilities through the annexation area will be consistent with the town's current stormwater. And drainage throughout the town. You can read that, it's like, not a big deal, but then it talks about how you'll pay for it, and that's. Just above section five, that storm drainage maintenance throughout the annexation will be consistent with the town's current drainage system, that, um. BFNS, the town anticipates additional annual costs of four thousand five hundred dollars to maintain stormwater structures. These additional costs will be financed by the general fund. And then if you look at fourteen sixty, the big thing last week or last month was that we still owned Outlet B. Well, we do, but it does state that, and I'm gonna find it for you here. Um. Outlet B and Shawnee Ridge subdivision consisting of approximately eleven point three acres currently being used as a private park area. Shall be continued to be owned and maintained by Shawnee Ridge. However, the homeowners association shall grant any easements reasonably necessary to allow the town access to control any of the stormwater facilities located thereon. Including the retention pond, overflow pipe, and other stormwater structures on the facility. So.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go. Okay, I guess, uh.
Did you tell Julie?
Thank you.
Wha- what I just heard, what I understand now is that we're responsible for it, and there's work that needs to be done on the drainage pond, we've got to figure out how to do it. Okay. Uh, what would you like? Uh, so how are we gonna?
Give it to be done while he's back there cleaning it up.
It, I, I mean, I looked at it, it does, it's full of cattails, and it looks like it's been, there's seven, and one would have done what the original designer intent was, but it does have a lot of, a lot of shit.
So.
It's not our shit.
So what are we supposed to do to fix that?
Also, we need to correct the flow, um, as it runs through our property and out. The back of our property to the pond.
Causing ravine across the easement.
It's been obstructed.
Do we like put riprap there or something? But I didn't look closely at that part, but it probably didn't.
Because it's been a old workway for you guys, so you kind of filled it in so you could drive through, but when the water flows, that doesn't work well.
That's just between the back of the river and the pond itself, so that was part of our estrus.
There's one on the other side too, that's very marshy.
So how are we gonna know when it's done to your satisfaction? And do we need to have that written down and what's expected by each party? How, how, how is that gonna be handled?
Do we have any documentation of what the pond's supposed to be anyway?
Oh.
Do we know?
I've not seen any. I mean, there should be a drainage report that the county or the town would approve in.
It should be, I mean, that, that.
Construction drawings, the, the town has the original submission of the construction drawings.
Just an oval on it.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Yeah.
There's no grading or anything on it?
Not really.
Not that we're in.
No grading.
Not like you do today.
Yeah, I mean, that, what they, how, what they put in, I guess, from that standpoint, I mean, there's some safety regulations around it and stuff of that nature, but. I mean, it looks like there was a document of some sort that they built it to. It would be kind of nice to know, so we would know.
Do enough that there were design requirements that they had to meet with.
I would have thought we would have documentation of that somewhere.
I thought you guys wouldn't have been aware of the resolution, but. You know, nobody, I mean.
Yeah, I would assume.
I would assume maybe, I don't, I mean, like, all of this. Points to BFNS as being the stormwater people, and, and I, you know, I don't know. Who designed that, but.
No, that was us.
Testering associate.
Okay.
Development, investor, hired them to design and build it.
So you came in at the twenty-fourteen where?
To review their submission and say that it meets the ordinances for stormwater management and quantity and quality.
So who, who wants to take responsibility for tracking down thi- this documentation of what, what the design standards were? What the specs were? I, I don't know.
If we can take the lead on that, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll see if there's any argument.
A question of how it functions as a stormwater management. It's all drains from the top of the hill down. It was, it was Ron's call. And it's probably not gonna be the same as if you want a, a recreation area with a pond that looks. Cool. I mean.
But I don't think that's the.
It wasn't designed to be a for, you know, designed for stormwater drainage.
From looking at it, I mean, from all the construction that's happened up there.
So.
It's silted and that's over with that. There's a big ravine that's been worn from all the water running without having proper. Ripoff pipe or is that it?
I think that Ron should be involved with BFS. Because he's the one that has to make the call of what happens to the stormwater management.
And when you dredge the pond, where does that stuff go?
Basically, what you do is you get a great big bag. Pulpit bag. And you blow it all into the bag. Um. And then that bag reaches out, water.
There's some water. Uh, there was water. Well, it's down there.
It wasn't. Well, typically you let it dry.
Right.
And then you take a utility knife, cut it, and then you have sand. To do whatever.
Drought's supposed to.
Last couple, when was it? The last couple we've done, we probably even did a haul that off.
That would be ideal.
Yes.
That would be ideal. Um, if, if, and Matt's gonna do this in conjunction with the wrapping up of the project back there?
I did.
That would make sense.
They come back through there and tear it all up again. And then you use access lane that's for the split station, it's gonna get all tore up and do this.
So Mary Jo, were you looking for someone on council? To help or Ron, to help Ron and BFNS or?
No, actually, um, Ron will just work with BFNS.
Okay.
And it should work out better that way. Um. I just think what we need to do is get it so that you don't have that soil erosion going on in the back of your house and stuff, right?
Yeah.
Our property's okay with what's going on to our property.
Yeah, we've been adding.
The easement is actually a washing way.
Oh, okay.
Standing between houses, the, the, and the, the, that runs out.
You don't have to remind me of the house. There's. Between two properties, I think there is a drainage easement, is that?
Yes, sixteen thirteen months ago. You and Cassell, right? When he put easement goes.
Right.
It's scary. I look, I, somebody told me to drive down there and I went, no.
So, so do we have the game plan? Uh, BFNS is gonna research the specs. And Matt, you're gonna coordinate with Ron and Julie and whoever else to make sure that.
When you're pricing you guys, so you guys can make determination.
Yeah. That's what he didn't pay for his services.
Well, it'd be what it'll be, we were responsible for.
Right.
So.
An idea, we just coordinate with the project as it's wrapping up, so that we don't have to. Do a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You get part of it, you get part of a page for through the V O T and whatever the pond is.
Well. That could come out of drain, drain water pond, drainage.
We gotta, we're cleaning up access from V O T, so I mean, that part will be cleaned up through that. Pond, so it would be cleaned up.
What about the extra year you're talking about, putting something in there for drainage, so it doesn't corrode?
That we need to, that could be.
We'll help look at how that could be even done.
That's, that's something that could get in the law, which honestly.
Okay.
And looking forward, is this something that, as far as maintaining it, so we don't get. In the same situation we're in now, is there an annual thing that we need to look at?
Done properly, no.
Okay.
Is, I guess the pond's probably not on your, just to China, and I guess the pond's probably not on your inventory for the annual inspection. Um, it might be something where the town, because we don't know.
Yeah, and then.
Right.
If the town comes up with some kind of MOU, come on, they're inspecting annually, so he can keep track and go, hey, we're busy here. Next year, when you have grabs.
I'd say, honestly, I'd say some of the shit that's in the bottom of the pond is probably from between the two houses, because it wasn't stabilized.
Right.
That's another story, that, that we move on with.
So Ju- Julie, can you act as a contact person for the Hawks Nest there, um?
Shoney.
Shawnee Ridge.
Shawnee Ridge.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
I think Kathy or I, either one.
Yeah, either one, because I may be more available if Matt has questions as to.
I'm afraid to get into my busy season, but I can definitely do my best to.
Yeah, let me know, Matt, if you, uh.
Okay. That's fine, I think so.
That's crazy. And honestly, the materials probably from, that pond was there when that phase was first built, and so every single house that's tributary to that phase probably didn't have the best. Erosion control and management during in home construction, which is very easy to happen, so.
You can see the light from the road going down between my house and Kristen's house, between our house and Schuler's, between Schuler's. I mean, you could see them all, but the, the two worst ones are between, on, on my side and then on Kathy's deep side.
What, just as we're speaking, not on this, this topic here, Hawks Nest or Shawnee Ridge, but. What do we have set up for, like, any sort of construction as far as our erosion control? Um, standards, I guess, like you will, assume, then we adopt like.
The town has, uh, standards for erosion control details and those, and those are based on typically counties and Lafayette.
So something that I would recommend for us as a town, um, when any of this construction starts, um, we have somebody. You know, you're busy already, somebody's gonna have to get all new jobs, the construction job, and they're gonna have to do the inspection, the weekly inspection.
And on our gateway project, uh, the plan that we have here, BFNS will be producing, uh.
Rule five.
Rule five, so sweat plants, stormwater pollution prevention plans. Uh, and then we also have a stormwater department that can help perform inspections, if that's something that. Ron would like assistance with during construction for our crews to come out. And check the erosion control measures that Bowen's installed, and make sure that all functioning properly, installed properly, being maintained and off the.
So from the folks that don't know, so there's weekly, there's a weekly inspection that has to happen, okay? Um, or if it's anything over half inch, um, you have to do an inspection to go through, so that's weekly. So, um, I know that West Lafayette has employed a outside service that they do that they go around and check all the job sites every week. Um, besides a self-reporting, that's something that we need to make sure that we're taking care of, I guess, as far as that, somebody in the house here, not only on. Gateway, but any of the stuff that's quick trip and any of those things that are.
And as part of that MS four partnership, Ron, I think the town has access to additional resources to help with inspections and most kinds of things as well.
We got it all?
I. I understood it that it should be, I mean, there's a cycle, it should be dredged every ten years or every fifteen years, is that? So that's all gonna be looked into.
No, what we're discussing now is having an option for Ron to inspect annually to be able to know exactly.
Great, thank you.
Good. Okay. Um, are 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 we done? Dave?
Unless there's anything else on, on that project itself, you know?
We have any idea? I mean, I think they're, they're putting the ball out and saying I'll be done.
Soon. I'll give you a date.
And I talked about it's electrical and.
We're getting there.
Yeah, no, we're, uh, as soon as we're stopped, we turn it over electrically and he has it, so we're we're good.
And our weather's changing, that's not an issue at all.
Tomorrow and today, actually, we were gonna do it today, but a little chilly with that, so. We bumped it to tomorrow and Dan said, no, can't do it, it's not bigger, so. It's a day.
We're getting there. Thanks.
Welcome.
Okay, um. M- moving on, uh, it should be the quick treasure, but I see that Silential Energy is online, zooming. Um, so if it's okay with everybody, just quickly touch upon so- solar, solar project. Uh. I am just curious how all the counselors feel about the concept of solar. I mean, do you have a favorable impression of it? Or do you think it's a waste of time?
I personally think it's a waste of time, you know, I wanna.
And so Matt feels it's a waste of time, Mary Jo feels it's a waste of time. So we got two people that feels it's a waste of time and.
I do too.
Uh. Okay, that takes care of that. Mark? If you're there. I disagree with you, I disagree with you because. Um. Do you have any idea what the electrical inflation cost? For the last two. Years event?
I have a pretty good idea.
Yeah, what do you think it is?
Our, our, well, I don't know exactly, I know where our bill goes up, I mean, from that standpoint, I mean, it's it's missed, I mean, thirty, forty percent is always bad.
We're talking about the electrical inflation for the town. And it's run between thirteen percent on the the on-demand. Uh, charges. Are about thirteen percent and the regular fees are up twenty percent, that's over two years, so. You all have expressed your opinion. On solar. And I would like to take, I would, I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead with solar. And I hope somebody seconds it, so I want you all on record on your positions, so. I make a motion to, um. Pursue s- solar, uh, as described by, um, Solential Energy. Um. Will there be a second? Second that? Motion has been second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? I, I. All all against? Hey, the rec- records show that there were two negatives or three negatives and two two in favor. Great. Um, I'm glad that's over and done with. Mark, if you're still listening. Appreciate all the effort you put into it. Uh, we are moving on. Um. Quick treasurer, I guess, is the next item.
The first item is the registered claims.
Uh, make a motion to approve the registered claims for. Uh, October fourteenth and November tenth for a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-one cents, second.
Motion by Chair, second by Matt, uh, any discussion, counselors? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Motion passes unanimously, she said.
I have received the. United Healthcare Benefits Renewal or. Got three employees that went up. Nine percent. For healthcare. Um. I'm meeting with the. H R committee. To look at maybe using a different type of. We can have up to two. Different plans, even though we only have three covered individuals, we can have different plan types. So we're looking at modifying the plan, obviously try to. Save some money, I have an appointment with. Consultant with epic who has our United Health. Plans and I'll be able to report back before the December, I mean, so you can incorporate that in the. Salary ordinance, are there any questions about the draft? Salary ordinance so far? One of the things I have sent you this week was a potential to. Have someone attend a webinar, the association. Municipalities. Is having a webinar about social media use and. We have, we never had a social media presence. People have differing opinions about that, this twenty-five dollar webinar, I recommend that. At least one of you, and I'm gonna have, um, the deputy clerk attend. She's very good at. That kind of thing. She could, uh, make some recommendations to you, she could be the person to keep that updated. But it would still take. Engagement from the council to, or to know what kind of things. We go.
If you have to attend.
So if you wanna. We get it as a. Video afterwards that you can't miss him on the day.
I'm I'm really recording anyways, just so I can.
So we pay the twenty-five dollars, we get the recording, but she gets to. Listen to it live, if there's questions that they answer, then they're not. Until that's, until. Okay.
We have any objectives that we're trying to develop a social media presence for Battle Ground, but we haven't had anything.
Well, not from, that's why I'm putting that to you, not from my point, but. We have. A. Emergency contact that people have to. Box in, it's not just something that will come to them like Facebook might, but. So the emergency, we don't use it to give. Public announcement type of stuff. Which you could use a Facebook page for, I kinda wanna reserve that for emergencies. But, um.
You said the question, well, the social media presence from that same point would be something like that, uh, text message or something like that can be issued or something with.
It's. Not text, it would be.
The problem, if you use that text thing too much, it's like. Every time you get a lot of text from one place, you just. You know? So it really needs to be more important stuff that goes through.
I'll say one of the things that would be nice is if you guys put on Facebook trash schedule, you know how hard it is to find on the website? Not, I mean, but like some page that. I know, but it, it's not always there in the beginning and then you kinda forget about it and then you're like, well, where is it? But if it's on the Facebook page, it's right there for everybody. I mean, I'm just saying, I think it's a great idea.
I'm all for having information in all places, just meet where they are. If people are on Facebook. Get it now. Yeah, if they wanna go to the website, go now.
We need to have a motion on this?
Not necessarily.
Everybody's in favor of that.
I think you will have to have a motion if you want to start from the Facebook page. But that, you said this webinar, no, but I I don't tender if there's not interest in having some.
And figure out what direction we go from.
Do you think it's gonna be limited just to Facebook or are you looking at other, uh, platforms? Or are we looking at other platforms?
I don't really keep up on it, I don't know what other platforms you might use.
You're a computer guy.
Yeah, I honestly, I dropped you totally, yeah.
I hate it's Facebook, younger kids Instagram, then you got some people with, I don't know what it's called anymore, it's Twitter.
X.
Yeah. Uh, I I wouldn't do TikTok, I.
To push your information to both Facebook and Instagrams at the same time, so she's not concerned.
Yeah, you shouldn't use Meta.
She's not afraid of salt and started the bad attacks.
I have all the stuff that I don't use it.
Next item, Georgia.
The other thing that I asked Eric to verify, there was a change in the. Legislation this summer that allows. A couple different things for executive session that you've never had before, one of them. Is personnel issues. That were previously had to do in by committee, now you can do an executive session to work things out. As a group, but not have it be a public meeting. The other thing is to, um. Procure development properties. And we already see code that you could not, and they changed that so that now you can consider purchase of properties in an executive session. And I. Uh, encourage you to plan an executive session fairly soon for that purpose.
With a particular end in sight or particular?
Public meeting, I'm not.
I got you, okay.
To say.
Fun, uh. Are you suggesting that, uh? Executive meeting before the next meeting or before the end of the year? Before the December meeting? Okay, there you go, counselors. Um. About this, next week on seventeenth, you have an open joint event?
On Monday, yes.
Sunday. Does everybody else have the seventeenth open?
At this minute, minute in time, yes.
Okay.
What time, seventy?
Six, six o'clock, same time, same place. As far as I know, I'm good. Okay. Okay. Next item, Georgia, please.
That's all I have.
I guess, Mr. Moyers?
Yeah, um, to the ongoing project with, uh, one hundred college one oh seven, uh, we are, uh, I believe. I'm not sure how far she might be through the drafts for, um, one oh seven here. Um, but we're, I think, wrapping up the drafts in in the bit, get ready to start the bidding process, so you should have something for probably both four occasions. I would say soon, um, but, uh, for her efforts, uh, she's, she has an invoice, I just happen to be the one, the recipient of it. Um, for, uh, five hundred per building to draw those, uh, those drafts out of the designs, so. Um, it, that can be. Well, that doesn't come out of the police department's budget, I hope, uh. That is the ones for, for resources.
That's your friend, right?
Yeah, drawing for one oh seven is what this is for. That one oh seven, I, is it just one oh seven or one hundred cars as well?
Uh.
She's got a separate one for, sorry, yes, she has a separate one for, uh, one one, one hundred.
So do you need us to make motions? Hey, this?
Yeah. I'll be soon.
I didn't know we were doing two buildings soon. That's.
Yeah, there's.
I think they asked for designs for both this building and.
Yeah, actually, this this building was approved first and then we added on the one oh seven because you said you wanted to do this. Educate as possible with with what we're doing and that makes it easier to give to a, uh, a bidder when they've got plans.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the invoice for a total of a thousand dollars. Is. Scabark. Yes, designs. Oh, was there a second? So, sorry, Matt.
I thought Chad did, but sorry.
I believe.
But you got it, you got it?
I got it.
Okay, I see you got it.
Eeny, meeny, uh, uh, Chad, I'm giving it to you. Motion by Mary Jo, second by Chad, uh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, counselors. A quick question, Chad. How detailed are drawing, are these construction drawings?
To be like, uh, like. It's gonna work in terms of the contractor to materials, things like that, labor hours, that kind, they would be. Ideally, we're gonna have to get free bids, so they'd be bidding off the same draw.
I got the idea. And what more we've received though, Sam?
Uh, she's working on this building right now.
Okay.
As we speak, we figured one oh seven. If we're gonna do, considering, we can get B J moving to his area first. So.
Very good. That seems pretty reasonable. Okay, Matt, uh.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, just updates, uh, we have this qualification on Saturday, no, this last Saturday, but the, uh, the first, so it was a nice day. Um, uh, also, our our shotguns are pretty old, we're converting those to less lethal, less lethal utility. Uh, we've already got everything we need to do that, so we just need to to convert them over, um. To replace those, then, uh, we have a, we had a previous quote for shotguns, it was approved by the board last year. Uh, there was no vendor that had those available, they were backordered. Uh, so, uh, we weren't able to purchase those off of that approval, so I'm asking to get a renewed, uh, approval for those. Our vendors, Izzo Heron, um, just to make it easier, uh. Like approval for up to sixteen hundred dollars per weapon for two shotguns. Um, and then it's probably not gonna be exactly that amount, but up to that, I don't know, assuming that that falls within our. Um.
Per vehicle then?
Yeah, it's one per vehicle, yeah.
Do you guys have a need for shotguns very often?
Well, I mean, we don't shoot a lot of people, but, uh. I'm sorry, so, yeah, the, uh, so, um. Yeah, so there there's different weapons, uh, platforms that would be used for different situations. Um, a a lot of what we do is also, uh, around here is wildlife extermination, and then there's something that's sick or injured. Um, that's, uh, we we use our weapons for that and and, uh. Obviously, it's depends on the situation or what we're doing where one weapon platform will be better than than the other. We're safer nighttime or daytime, a lot of different considerations, just another tool to have, um. But, uh, uh, but again, this is not a new request, this would be a, a renewal of a previous request.
Same, same dollar?
Uh, I, that I don't know, I think it's probably higher now, uh, than it was before, so, um, I think, well, I don't know, I think it might have been eighteen last year. I I don't remember to, to be honest with you.
Can you? Can you get us a, a cost?
I mean, yeah, so the, so the quote for it is is up to sixteen hundred dollars, uh, for the weapon, for weapon.
Okay, so if we make a motion?
Yeah, then I can go, uh, and this is assuming that they don't have another shortage again, but, uh, we also need to check the budget and make sure that we.
Where are you, where are you getting shotgun down?
Heron, uh, Rio Heron Company, Danville, Illinois. Uh, last year we checked with multiple vendors, none of them had them. It was just a popular, uh.
The real can handle?
Uh, well, yeah, we're a peasant, maybe, but we're doing a little more specialty, uh, use than that, and so. Um, I mean, they sell weapons there, but not. Police weapon, they're very specialized then.
What, what about the other agency? Cause they're all been away for shotgun.
I I don't know that. They're, I've not heard that, they've all gone away for shotguns.
State police don't carry no more, okay.
Aren't they carrying ARs now? It's already, I think they are.
They are.
They're carrying ARs, I think.
Yeah, so they carry, every every agency, there's, what agency still uses shotguns, there's agencies that use that and not rifles, agencies that use rifle, not shotguns. Uh, some agencies, uh, may use something else, I don't know, that it's. Uh, but this is what we feel is is needed for, for a long time.
Probably a little cheaper with.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and purchase two. Shotguns for the police department at sixteen hundred dollars a shotgun. Okay, okay. Can we do it? Like a guy, yeah, you got it?
You're slow.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Chad, um, any discussion? Was that sixteen hundred dollars a piece?
Up to thirty-two hundred dollars, up to thirty.
May the motion show that the total was thirty-two hundred dollars.
I thought I said per weapon.
Oh, I know you did, but, yeah. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, mine. Oh, okay. We 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 use non-verbal.
Realized it was sixteen hundred dollars a shotgun.
I thought it was sixteen, total nine hundred dollars a shotgun, sorry, it's sixteen.
So, uh. Wow, do you want?
No, I'm just questioning, yeah, I won't guess, but I mean, I'm just.
I will grant you to change if you want to be changed, okay, great, uh.
So I get, I get the double satisfaction of myself being shocked at a price and then presenting it. To a group who's been shocked, I really ask you for that price, so, it's a rewarding spiritual, uh, experience for me. To a group who's been shocked, I really ask you for that price, so, it's a rewarding spiritual like, uh, experience for me. Um, so the, uh, I wish I was in the shotgun selling business, um. Uh, we had Halloween patrol, uh, recently, that, uh, was went well, also very fun. Um, we started up on the hill this year rather than uh, downtown, so it took a little while to get downtown. We know we didn't get to everybody and and everywhere, but uh, we gave out about sixty bucks worth of uh, candy, fortunately, I have a pastel membership, so. Um, so that, and then we did that again the next night because uh, the H R has had Halloween again, so. One night's not enough, um, and so we gave out candy then too. Uh, and uh, yeah, it was, it 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 went pretty well, um, however, I know that there were some uh, thoughts or issues uh, about. Not having, not seeing patrol that night, um, and so. If just with the last little bit of time I have, if I could just give you kind of an update on how the the roster lays out, so we have one marshal. We have a chief deputy, uh, we have three deputy marshals, one of those, we just gave it conditional offer to, which is what you. Uh, talked about the last meeting, uh, Spark Cole comes from pre police department, um, he is in the conditional offer meeting, he's in the background check process. Uh, and then once he's, um, did with that, then he can be given a, taking off probation essentially, uh, but he is. Also doing a refresher course, which is required if you've been out of the academy for for a little while. Uh, and and agency like ours for for the foreseeable future is not. Really sending people uh, uh, to the academy, we're we're trying to pull what we can from. Now, you sent one officer, uh, which was me and, boy, I bet you regret that now, um, so. Uh, we have, uh, so one marshal, and I know there's some question about the numbers, so we have one marshal, we have, um, uh. Four deputies, uh, one is a chief deputy, four deputies, um. The uh, training requirements uh, aren't affected uh, at all, uh, that. Um, and in fact, you can have one marshal and up to six deputies before, um, you need to to look at anything different. Um, one of our hires is on sick leave, uh, and he's he's had a surgery and will be out for a little while longer for that, so you're not seeing him. Um, so that's, that's why, uh, with the other open position that I made that request earlier was that. We want to be able to get more visibility, uh, I, if we want to hire a school zone person. I would need to find an officer with them uniforms, the whole works, pay for all of that. Uh, whereas we have a reserve that's already got all of those things, uh, but has completed the cabinet course. So that's, that's the basis of that request, otherwise it will cost us more money to to hire someone else to fill those times. Um, moving on, and if there's any questions about that, I'm I'm happy to answer those, uh, but I don't want to give them any issue right now, um. You asked me last time about a vehicle for uh, code enforcement, um. Well, those vehicles are pretty nifty, that pretty has, uh, those players Rangers are pretty expensive though, um, and so, uh, I'm I'm just. You know, I was trying to get the best thing for a buck, uh, that, even for a a high end, um, uh. One that could be out on the roads, uh, possibly, uh, were base prices, uh, twenty thousand nine ninety nine for some. Uh, I've heard people buying them a lot higher than that, so. Uh, that my, I I'm of the opinion that we should, in order to save the most money, we should. At least first look at, see if we can't get a a used police car from another agency that's. Um, uh, retiring police car, just they're going out of service, they're buying new ones. Um, there's some agencies that recycle them all more often than others, so that's. Uh, I I like that idea just because, you know, then we have, it it is a truly a vehicle that can be on the roadway without issues. Uh, i- my concern with the Rangers, you, cool, but my concern with them, uh, is that, um. You know, we're we're pretty is a great, we, a great place for those because their, their streets are, uh, you can't get up to speed as quick there. Uh, you know, they're pulling out on six hundred gear or something and they get hit, they're done, um. Uh, then we can also use it if we have like, let's say, a, we tour the street or something, we need a a car to sit there to guide people around. Or any other, or you know, one of our vehicles breaks down like we did just before Pivlers this year, we we do have a a backup option, so. Um, and it would be a lot cheaper than that, I I think that probably the easiest way to do that would just be for the board to approve up to a certain amount. Um, because I'm gonna have to be doing a lot of comparison and there's probably sales that might not wait until the next board meeting to. To do that, if you have a better idea, I'm. Very happy to to hear that, entertain that, um, but this is, this is what I think is probably the easiest.
Have we hired one yet?
We've got a couple applicants for it, yeah.
They disclose of the vehicles through the auction or something like that, that like.
Yeah, they they come free, yeah, they come free wire with with the lights already. Um, you know, they're gonna at least need headlights if they're driving around and stopping a lot, so.
Would the ordinance officer, would he be qualified to drive a police car?
It, we we, yeah, we're not trying to get that image that that they are driving.
I mean, it's not gonna be a civilian like me or whatever, I mean, I couldn't drive, I couldn't drive a police car.
But he is town play, I think you probably could, um, but, uh, yeah, round round us, but he just says it more than I can, so. Um, it it's, uh, it's a joke from the board, so, um. I mean, they could, we, we're not trying to represent this person as a police officer, though, um.
Just say code enforcement.
It it just say code enforcement on it, um, is easy enough, or just, you know, town background, it's it's a good option, so. Um, but, you know, we do like to have the option with the the lights inside already, they. They do need a radio, they do need to be able to communicate with us, because not everyone's happy to be.
Well, I'm just saying, if you got one. In the background, you're gonna hire, could we use second police car, I mean, until we can come up with?
I mean, in in size, we've come up with it, but the problem is then you're also representing as a police officer. Um, and you're, uh, you know, it puts them in kind of a a liability situation where, let's say, they roll up on. Uh, crash, right, and and or or somebody's, um, you know, hurting somebody in front of them, these things happen, uh. And they're not gonna know that it was a, it was a code enforcement person rather than a police officer. It just, uh, you know, will it happen? Probably not, could it happen? Yes, and that's enough, unfortunately, so. Um, but I I do like the use police car idea just because it's, uh, it is pre-wired, it's, um, ready to go, give me thoughts.
From from my background, we never put anybody in a fully marched one bar unless they were armed. They'd they'd have to have the ability to defend themselves if they're representing themselves as a police officer. I don't think it's wrong for putting code enforcement officer.
Then, uh, then we have to make sure that whatever they drive definitely shows that they're code enforcement.
Yeah.
I mean, it has to be very evident.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the, um, you know, the other advantage of vehicles is also the climate control factor as well, but. Um, in terms of safety with that, with what you're saying, and and supportive of that is that, uh. You know, we don't have twenty four seven coverage and it's very possible that person may be out here. By themselves, without an officer present, so that's, uh, and while they would still be trained on how to call for backup assistance, that could be. Ten, twenty minutes away. Which is a long time or something.
So how much you love to approve?
It's. I mean, they're all over the map in in terms of, it really depends on how. How soon you want to start doing maintenance on it, you know what I mean, so, um, I mean, it's, the the players Rangers. Uh, twenty thousand nine 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 and and that's not including getting them, uh, you know, wired and and outfitted and stuff like that, so. Um, anything. I mean, I have a quote for a Maverick, but it's a, it's, the the board needs to decide if they want a brand new vehicle or if they want to buy a used vehicle. But, um, that's.
Well, I mean, it's kind of like, well, I think West Lafayette, tire and stuff, and open. Go vehicles, aren't they? Uh, Westside, they had gone from the Gophers to the Jeep Wranglers, now they've settled on the Mavericks. And those are running.
Thirty three thousand seven hundred eighty nine dollars twenty five cents.
That's brand new, right?
Brand new, yes. How much? Uh, thirty three thousand seven hundred eighty nine dollars twenty five cents.
Yes, I would feel better if we were gonna buy a used vehicle.
Uh, excuse me, if you, excuse me, uh, only one person talk at a time if we could, okay, because George is recording this and. It just helps her to, uh, review them then, so I don't know who had the floor, but. Just try to be aware of when people are talking, please.
Just, um, I would feel better personally if I knew what the. Cost was for a used vehicle, I don't want to come right out and say. You can spend this much money, I need somebody to tell me this is possibly what a used vehicle can cost.
Can we table this till the next meeting?
Uh, what, I mean, if we have thirty more seconds, I think we could.
Okay, go forward.
So it it. The, and I understand what you're saying, and we could do that, uh, I think probably between anything up to fifteen thousand, we could, uh, find something, it's just that there's. A lot of different, uh, agencies, these are putting, put up for auctions and those kind of things, and so I don't know that I could give you a price. And then wait for the next meeting, just have to just stick with.
That's okay, yeah, it just, there wasn't any price for me to look at.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Right, and so I heard thirty three and then I heard twenty two.
Yeah.
Now you're saying fifteen.
I would say up to fifteen, we could probably find that sort of use, for use, that's unreasonable, yes.
Um.
Just a minute, I'm waiting for Georgia because you had to check your print about the budget.
Well, I'm just curious how many hours a code enforcement officer would really work in, in, uh, that would be, right, to buy a car. Car, yeah.
Well, that's why we don't want to buy the Ranger, we really would rather be a vehicle that we could use. Uh, interchangeably if we needed to for for something else, like if we had a vehicle breakdown, um, and we we just needed something we could get around and. Uh, we could do that, which has happened to us before, even with two vehicles, um, so that's the reason for the vehicle being. Uh, the the problem with not having a vehicle is liability for that person, they're not on foot, so. What happens if they get in a crash, who's who's paying for that if they're driving their own vehicle? Um, I know there are towns that have that person drive their own vehicle, um, but. That, I I think. For my, and I don't want to name town, but that. I I think that opens you to the liability of. The crash and they were doing work for your time, it'll cost you probably more than it would have to buy the vehicle.
All right, this is just my input, I'd like some time to think about this before I vote for any money for another car. Um, can we put this off until next month?
I, yeah, that's.
Okay.
It's a more decision, uh, I'm just responding to what.
Sure.
You know, you had last time, for me.
I I would, if you.
That's fine, that's fine, we we, yeah, but, but, yeah, just a quick thought is, if there was an extra car, uh. Whether it's code enforcement, as long as it's marked and people on a quick visual, they think it's a. Police car, it's gonna lend more presence to, uh, the the department and. Even though they are aren't officially available for stopping whatever.
How many hours is this person looking at though?
Well, the, I I think rather than paying the hours, this. Do, do we need that position, we determine that we do, um, this is the equipment that's required for that position.
We did.
Regardless of if they they work for five hours or, um, you know, forty.
Well, that was when we didn't have five deputies. When we talked about how. Well, it was a couple years ago. And so now the code enforcement is getting resurrected, but we also have, you want everybody to be someone that. Uh, that's, I'm. I guess, I'm, my challenge to the council would be to. Validate why we need a code enforcement officer. If we have that many of them.
That was, I think we're going back in time with that discussion.
And I would concur that we discussed that before and, um, we have to review our, you know, so. Uh, we decided to belong.
If it would, yeah, Mary Jo, would it help, um, because I'm a visual person too, would it help if I found, uh. Some, even if we can't get that exact vehicle, we found some different ideas with the price of like, here's what you get probably for this, this price and these ones. Was for sale last month, even if it's not still.
That would help me a little bit.
Yeah, you go to somebody's auction, I mean, I know for like, for us in equipment, we go to somebody's auction house and they get historic data for what pricing was.
Oh, okay, yeah, I enjoy that, yeah, okay. City of Loughlin, hopefully what we sell the squad cars for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, sounds like, yeah, actually, I didn't know, so, that's all, that's all I have.
Yeah, BJ, these new deputies that you're hiring.
Mm-hmm.
Could you possibly bring them to a meeting, introduce them?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, you hired one.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned one was on medical leave, yeah, that that individual on medical leave, that's why. So that last meeting and this meeting as well, that he can hear he's on medical leave.
Is he working now?
No, he's on medical leave, sir. He is.
I heard that, okay.
Yeah, so he can't work if he's on medical leave. Like you can't.
Okay, well, I I understand that medical leave, but you just hired him, he's on medical leave.
Yeah, I I unfortunately, uh, the human body does what it wants to do, so. Um, I I apologize on his behalf first for his, uh, illness, but, um, the, uh, I think then, uh. You know, with the other individual I had invited him tonight, he was on assignment elsewhere, these are part-time jobs, people have to work elsewhere, but you can certainly, uh. Um, and and I can preserve to meet the, uh, bar, he's a big guy, so, giving this. I'm I'm, that's all I have, I'm just answering.
Okay, 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 just don't give them, don't tell them about the initiation process. Keep that a surprise, okay, uh. Mr. Ron, please.
All right, uh, the biggest thing I have, uh. So the EPA is in Ohio right now. Uh, through stormwater. They are checking the state's credibility. And they're not liking a few things that I D M are do, is doing. Uh, so Indiana is up net, uh. Christopher Berg, they have an employee that they can, um. Accept the. Help me get all my digital requirements, my mapping and stuff, uh. I haven't gotten a quote from them yet, but that's coming down the pipe, uh. And I'm, you know. It's gonna take a little bit of time, uh. Just because there's, there's like twenty things that I have to do, I did for my packet for EPA and and. The better I can make it present. Present it to them, uh, the more likely chance that they're not gonna come and visit me. And I really. Uh, the second thing I have, uh, we did pick up the Ford from Mike Razor's today, uh. And we've, it's five hundred ninety two dollars and eight cents. Uh, I have a new shipping cable and a new, uh, transmission lever. Thursday, I will probably go to West Lafayette Street Department, uh, talk to the new guy in charge there, uh. They've installed a underbody Bosch. With their salt trucks, you know, I'll see about getting ours over there, you know, maybe every couple weeks or something. Uh, during solving. We can probably try to head off some of the rest.
Uh, how's an employee working out?
Not bad.
Uh, any progress on your building down there?
Working. As we deliver, the the. The stone's already been laid, it's ready to go. Ready for them on the fourth.
Great, where is it exactly this new building goes, is it out there?
Out there at Street Mart.
Street Mart.
I believe you've been there, haven't you?
You need a motion? Over five hundred and some dollars for the shipping cable?
No, no, okay, anything under fifteen hundred from there?
Any, any questions for Ron?
Did you get, uh, me up there with?
Yes, and, uh. Andrew. Uh, the paper guy, uh. He's a squirt of. Uh, he said he could do anything less than like his theaters is or something. Make it look how.
They're square up the concrete too.
He said square up.
We make sure that we're. Testing it through, do you imagine talking about some of those catch bases? So, we're on one of those kind of shot.
How about the sidewalks, uh?
Um, he called me the end of last week. Uh. This stuff was potentially gonna be in, uh, this week, do the cracks on North Street. And then, uh. I'm assuming he's doing the, uh, Main Street right in front of, uh.
Yeah, and again.
New blocks.
Looking forward to. Seeing that taken care of. Okay, um, anything for Ron? Comment from the audience.
Uh, what about our in-keeping list for me?
That should be Jim signed it.
Is that all good?
As far as I, I'm, I'm.
Just double checking on our part too, so.
So we have to have a permit every five years.
Oh, yeah, 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 I I signed that, yeah. Thank you.
And our contract operator. Kind of slipped past him a little bit, uh, so we're a month behind, uh. I say a month behind, they wanted their six months early, so they can review. Because. Because I do have some mess right now. I mean. My, our new inspector, she's now.
Wow.
Who's your inspector now, Ron? Or who was?
Maggie.
Maggie, she quit?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was.
We were so bad our communities who worked with too. Yeah, one or two.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for Ron? When you're going on, thank you, Jensen, for bringing that up with clarity. Yeah, Gary Plan stuff.
Okay, so. Just a couple of things about. Use the amendment one twenty two, that was a fueling station one. We discussed it briefly, I think, in the September meeting, possibly. So I do verify Quick Trips has an active permit or an active application filed, so they'd be grandfathered in for anything we did. But the city of Lafayette was the one that was pushing this. They actually ended up passing it with an amendment, so we're gonna actually. Have to vote on amendment next week with area plan, so that'll come to us in the December meeting. I think Clarksville voted for it. I think they voted for it. The county denied it. And we have the option to basically deny it, approve it, or we can work with area plan and they will help us. Draft amendment that or draft an ordinance that.
Fits our needs.
Fits our needs, like we can, you know, if we don't care about the architecture thing, if we don't care about that kind of stuff. You know, we can, we can exclude certain items out of that. So. That'll be coming down the pipe though. So we'll, we'll, we'll definitely tell about. The other one, use the amendment one twenty three. I don't think there's anything for us to vote on necessarily tonight. We started a discussion, though, there was some interest in putting a large. Data center in Tepi County. And so area plan, we. We redefine what what zones of data center was allowed to go into. So before it was. Commercial I one, I two, I three. And something else, we we set it only to I two, which. On the surface, it sounded good because I two is industrial near residential. But we have so little I two in Tepi County, it actually excludes any data center. From. It would exclude them from being able to build into Creek County currently. The amendment also indicates that they would have to have up to. Or at least three independent meetings with the town councils or county council before anything can be built. Things like that. So really, Tepi County is trying to safeguard us from something coming in that we don't want necessarily until already. So there's, there's gonna be a lot more discussion about this. We kind of put a year time limit on it, so we'll revisit it throughout the year and. Keep going from there, but, yeah, more coming along.
So there is an ordinance that they supplied to you, which have the terms. So you're not supposed to go ahead and.
That was for the fuel extension.
Now, the data center, a large data center, there's an ordinance. The amendment one twenty three they sent so that you could decide if you're gonna participate with the. Adding the terminology to the U two. So it. What I gave you, what they sent was. It adds the terms data center, which is ten thousand square feet or less. And large data center, which is ten thousand square feet or more. And that's all this ordinance that you have in front of you right now. That's all. Which has had the terminology.
Right. So like Wintec, their data centers they have are not over ten thousand square feet currently. But Wintec's data center is also service our county and our our area of. You know. Other data centers, you know, opening items like that, don't typically create jobs in the area, nor do they really service our area, and they just bring resources. So, right, so that's the. But yeah, larger data center would be, I think we already went ahead and drove in that earlier, because Wintec is ready to add on. To other data centers and exceed ten thousand square feet, so we'll have to. Do that, but like one of the data centers in Indiana just got, is getting built is a hundred thousand square feet. Is the the size of it, so. Yeah.
Where is that?
Boom County. The meta data center.
Got it. I know, that's.
That it? I think we need to, I don't have the, I don't have the amendment for me. The ordinance, do we need to make a motion and pass that?
Can you send them, please?
Ten thousand square feet is a very small data center. And.
So I, if you're not gonna address it tonight, that's. I did, there's hard copies. I did, you know.
I think there's a a a desire to table it for right now, I'm going to.
Well, these are the hard copies, if you're gonna look at and. You had the email, but.
I I circle back to Ron a minute.
Sure, thank you.
I see golf course. Next to your name.
I I was, I saw that too, words.
We now have a new. The Vodger Golf Course. They did a. Permit through the county to expand. And their steward tech got denied. So I'm putting them into a, they're going directly into a manhole structure. Chris, I got him last week, the logistics on it. They approved it with a couple of things. So I went ahead and forwarded his email to Cheeseman. He's doing the work and so they can coordinate that. They will be responsible, it'll be just like up on three hundred, they'll have their own. Granger pumps that they're responsible for. Unfortunately, their their run is gonna be about twenty nine hundred feet, nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty. So they're responsible for all that too. So I submitted a rough layout of where the force meeting was gonna go, and then they submitted drawings and a selection of the pump. That they're gonna install for the ground pump. The important thing, I think, for the town to note is this is all gonna be. Golf course owned, maintained, operated. Ron is not responsible to maintaining it, but this town's not responsible. The only point of connection is when it discharges into the town. One of the comments we had was for them to provide further detail on how that connection should be made. And they have the town's development guide, which shows them how the connection should be. So the only thing I'll have to inspect is the connection.
What happens if there's an issue that happens? I don't know how. How it might happen or what it might be, but and who's. And it's not the town's responsibility. I mean, is it gonna be obvious?
What kind of issue?
I don't know, sort of clogged line, I don't.
On their force.
Well, what what if there's an issue at the connection part where it's clogged up, you know, there's.
It's theirs. There's. All I basically have to do is pull the van home. And then I can see if there's something wrong with my system.
Okay.
And if it's not, not our system, it's there. I mean.
Okay, okay.
It's breaking out gradually.
Yeah, if our load station handle that tap on. What's how small it is?
Yes, I would go into the lower ground. Well, the bigger, bigger of the two.
Thank you for thinking about that. Any other questions? If if not, next item on the agenda. What do you want to talk about, folks? The sidewalk project is off, we've covered the social media webinar. The development properties in executive session. There are no rec volunteers. Possible upgrade scope of the RFP. Do we need to discuss that at all? I don't know. Updated procurement costs, that's off, so the project that's done. Promotion fund deferred to December, by the May. Anything else? Anything else you want to talk about, councilors? This is, this is your chance to gallery. Anything else you want to talk about?
Thirty five.
There you go. And so I'll make it really quick. I am on the process of getting done with school, but just kind of a rough estimation on what my future holds within the town, of course. Maybe running the wastewater plant in the future is probably what's going to happen, but. I will need to set up like the net D M R and just a nice little timeframe of just a window, because some things are gonna be. In a word, to be where I need to be to sort of testing there in the lab instead of where we're at now with our contract operating. So just something to keep in mind.
Translated is that we need to keep an eye out for extra labor.
Not necessarily an extra labor, it's just more of a.
There's gonna be equipment that he's gonna need.
Right, okay.
So we need to set you up with your own little.
And I need a little bit more experience when it comes to sludge wasting as well, because I haven't really been shown so much of that. And just getting more into our lines of just projects and stuff. That'll just help me and help the town out more in the future. The more I'm starting to be a part of that as well, and doing inspections, I can. Take a little bit, a little load off of Ron as well. Whenever he's busy, we can work together.
Well, take your time and don't do anything you're not comfortable with, you know.
So like Jim mentioned, in the future, near future, we will have to hire another full time person.
Address some labor issues.
Right, yeah. Thank you, thank you, sir. We're proud of you, though, for getting your.
Yeah, that was.
Get your license less than two years, whatever.
Yeah.
Pass the tips.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So thanks, thanks, Seamus.
I knew you were waiting, I just had the.
I was saying who's gonna pick it up, you know.